To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So three point O is to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Um, I do actually have one addition. Um, we're gonna add four point two just to introduce Jane Wolf, which we'll do right after the. Um, other recognition.
Okay, um, so you can make a motion with the adjustment if you.
I'll make a motion with the adjustment.
Okay, all those in favor?
Oh, we need a second. I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Agenda is approved. Uh, all right, four point O are acknowledgements and recognitions, um, which we gratefully have some this evening.
We do. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Plaman and John to either stand or just come up and sit at the table here, um, and uh, in kind of an unconventional way, I learned that um, Mr. Plaman was being honored as the Assistant uh, Coach of the Year uh, for Minnesota and um, so I had to email John and say, is this true? Uh, and it is. So um, John, maybe tell us a little bit about uh, how that came about and a little bit about your assistant coach and how honoring he is of this award.
So uh, this is an award from the Minnesota State High School Coaches Association, which we belong to and a lot of coaches across Minnesota do.
Yeah.
Yep, Minnesota State. It's not to be confused with the.
The High School League.
High School League, which is another governing body of all sports, pretty much. But this is a coaches association that we joined and they, they acknowledge and uh, coaches that done a really great job every year, head coaches and assistant coaches and Plaman was this year's, or last, I guess, last ski season.
Last season, yeah.
Yeah, the Assistant Coach of the Year and um.
For the state, right?
For the whole state, yep.
Yeah.
Um, for the, I think they did what they said. Oh, wow, they did it for all, they, for you, see, for me, it was boys. For you, it was boys and girls. So, you know, the, the thing you guys about assistant and head coach, those of you who've been watching the program and know who we are, it, the assistant is only a name. I mean, really, it's an equal thing. And in fact, a lot of how this thing goes is because of Plaman. He has incredible organizational skills. I mean, he has incredible technical abilities. He does all of our timing, repairing equipment, all kinds of issues that we have. Plaman takes care of it and, and keeps me sort of even keeled. I can be kind of a little bit of a, just big, big thinker and he's the detail guys who to happen.
We make a good team.
We do make a really good team. The whole reason we started this, you guys, is that we had kids who were into it. Um, and when they were really young, we just had a pulse and decided to do it for the, the junior team. Before you know it, we became the high school coaches. We sort of learned as we went along. Um, it's been a lot of fun and good and we're gonna keep going here for a while. These are our kids. We'll see what happens. Um, let me see what else I had. I had, I had some notes for you. Yeah, it just, yeah. Oh, this, I mean, all this stuff that he does, like we have these team radios, you guys, this, this piece of timing equipment is extremely complex. We hand it to Plaman and he takes care of it. Um, team identity, like, you know, if it was left up to me, we'd all be sort of just wearing whatever, but Plaman decided that we all needed jackets, branded jackets, looks really cool. And I gotta tell you, the kids, when they got those things on, they kind of pop out. So that's been good. And that's, I think, about it.
And if I'm not mistaken, Plaman, John won the Head Coach of the Year Award. How many years ago?
Two thousand twenty-two, twenty, twenty-twenty-three, when both boys and girls team won the sections and both teams qualified for the state. I mean, that, that was like unheard of.
Yep.
For our small school for both teams to win the section and both qualify for the state championship.
I remember that.
Yeah.
And then last year, guys, I think everyone knows this, that the boys team won second place in state other team. And, you know, just to give you a sense of that, like, we're going against schools like Nataca, Dyna, Hellmurray, the private schools down there. It's, there's no Alpine skiing is kind of a neat thing in that. It's like, it's like hockey used to be in Minnesota, right? Or a road could come down and beat everyone. There's no divisions. We're just all scheming out there, no matter what. So a big giant high school, we're playing against them. And so it's a, it's a credit to the kids mostly, but we do provide a lot of structure and grown it into a good way.
Well, as a former coach, um, thank you for the oodles of hours for like no pay. Uh, it's all for the love of kids and the love of the sport. And we, our kids are lucky to have you both.
Yes. Well, thank you. May I say one more thing?
Please.
Um, if you're, if this is getting recorded or broadcasted?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, if you're watching today and you're wondering why should I send my kids for a ski team? Yes. Um, we, we take kids of just any level of ability and we would love to have the, um, everyone on the ski team. So.
Yeah, we need more.
Yeah.
Let them see more.
Well, it's amazing that um, we have so, so many skiing opportunities in Cook County, you know, whether it's Alpine or cross country, you know, we sort of have an embarrassment of riches, really, as far as Minnesota's concerned, at least from the Alpine perspective on that. But um, so it's, it's amazing that we also have some champions like you guys that are making it go and really leveraging what we have here.
Yeah.
Um, and kind of enriching that opportunity for the community. So that's awesome.
Yeah.
Nice job.
And we are, I don't know if this is the body to do it in, but we are up for more support. It's an expensive sport and we'd like to find it, we'd like to find more kids to be able to find their way to it.
Yeah.
Because we do have this incredible uh, facility in these mountains and they've been very supportive. So we're gonna keep going. You know, for a while here.
I told Coach John that now that we have won, um, we've been section champions, um, we've won Assistant Coach and Coach of the Year. The only thing that's left for us to accomplish is the state championship win. So.
All right.
His son, let's hear you guys.
All right, you heard me first.
And thank you for all you do. We appreciate it. And you can sneak out, don't worry.
We'll do that.
All right, yeah, thank you, guys. All right, four point two, we have uh, Ms. Jane Wolf.
Yeah, this is just a quick introduction. Uh, last board meeting, I asked all of our new hires to, uh, if they can, uh, to come and introduce themselves to the board so that at least board members have a face with people who are working with our, our kiddos here in school. Um, this is Jane. Jane, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're doing?
Yeah, so um, I live down in Two Harbors. I've been a speech pathologist for uh, gosh, math is not my, my place. Since twenty seventeen, I've been practicing. I started out in Alaska and moved down to Minneapolis in twenty twenty. And so I'm coming from a hospital setting, so I, which is kind of handy because it means I can do feeding therapy with some of our kids that we see. Um, and I'm really loving this, this job up here. The staff is awesome. I love being a contractor because you don't have to do a lot of the extras that teachers have to do. Um, so I feel like this kind of fly on the wall. And it's just like, oh, this is just great. I get to have positive relationships with all the people I meet and I love being able to provide uh, intervention to some of these kids who aren't gonna get it otherwise in person. There's a lot of pretty severe disabilities up here and you really need hands-on therapy to make progress. Um, so that's one of my goals with having a private practice is to deliver high-quality uh, therapy that you would normally only be able to get in a city. So it's kind of fulfilling one of my personal goals of giving back to society. And, and thank goodness, I talked to Chris last spring and kind of cold called and said, hey, you guys using that SLP?
Yeah, so a year ago, uh, we were a hundred percent of our speech services was virtual. None of our kids had an in-person speech therapist. Then the need here is, as Jane pointed out, significant. Um, I, I lied there. We had Haley Looney. She was one day a week working with some of our little. Um, and so, uh, we were lucky enough, last month you met Mabel, uh, who's here full-time as our teacher, as an SLP and uh, now Jane, Jane is with our students two, two days a week for the most part. So we went from point two to one point six in-person SLP staffing uh, since last year and Jane's a big part of that. I observed something a couple of weeks ago. One of our students who's in a wheelchair and, and has significant disabilities, I looked, I walked by and I happened to see the SLP and an OT and a case manager all working with this kid. And it was like, finally, we have the services that this, this young person needs to have on a regular basis. So we haven't been there for a long time. So it feels really good to finally be kind of in that situation. So Jane drives up uh, from Two Harbors, spends the night and then so works back-to-back days and then um, drives back. That's kind of the arrangement we've made and um, yeah. Are you, are you really riding the bus in with?
No, so actually I drive home most nights or I stay at our cabin in Finland if the stars align.
The stars align, yeah.
It's just awesome because I don't have to go home to two kids.
Right.
So it's like a mini vacay and then I get to work. Uh, yeah, but no, I'm not driving the bus. But if the roads get bad enough, or sorry, riding the bus on driving it, if the roads get bad enough, I'll be hopping on at Little Marais and
Sure.
enjoying my noise-canceling headphones.
Because Catherine drives Zoom from Finland every day.
It's, it's really a labor problem. Those, those. Yeah, it's crazy. Um, I also observed that student. I saw him over the summer in, at uh, his home and I observed him again today with the SL, the other SLP and the OT and he's like a different kid.
Progress is observable.
Sentences, but it took us six weeks to get him to repeat one phrase. And today he was, he repeated like five brand-new phrases within a twenty-minute session. I was totally mind-blown. So it's, it was, it gives me goosebumps to see that kind of progress with that kid because he's, he has some very severe disabilities.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's really huge.
Fun to watch.
Yeah, yeah, it's very rewarding work.
Well, thank you so much for making that commitment. We really appreciate it.
Joining our team.
Oh, this place is awesome. I wish I lived in Grand Marais. Truly, yeah, thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
You're invited.
I know, I know. Wait until the kids graduate.
Have a good night, Jane.
All right, thanks.
All right.
That's true.
Roman's good.
All right, bye, guys.
Yeah.
Okay, five point O are our recognition of visitors and community comments. Um, community comments is an opportunity for the public to address the school board on an item included in the agenda in accordance with the guidelines printed at the end of the agenda. Um, do you know if we have anyone signed up? Um, so no community comments, but we have some visitors. So welcome. Thanks for being here, um, for you guys here in the room. And then hello, everybody watching online right now and also watching the recording in the future. Uh, we appreciate you being here. Um, all right, six point O are reports. Uh, six point one is our principals report. Mr. Belangi, good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, um, so we've been busy. Uh, it's been a busy year and especially just recently, the last couple of weeks, um, in Sawtooth. Uh, we had our special lunches last week, so we were able to invite um, all of our K-five families in to have lunch with kids. That's cool. And it's fun. It's a fun way that we have them all in the Sawtooth gym. It's full of people, full of kids. And it's intentionally done at the beginning of the year so we can help families make connections um, and that type of thing. And it was just really great to have the families in. We had them in on Tuesday and Wednesday last week. Um, and then on Monday last week was Indigenous Peoples' Day and we were excited to have Cassandra and Dakota, and they are from the organization, the North American Traditional Indigenous Food Systems Organization, um, which is based out of Minneapolis, but they were able to come up here and take our Sawtooth kids on foraging walks through the school forest and learn about local plant life and their medicinal uses. Um, and so that was fun. And they tied in their stolen soup celebration um, as well on Monday last week with that. Um, and then in our middle school and high school, Cassandra and Dakota, uh, were able to present to all of our middle school and high school students about food sovereignty, um, and issues around that. And that's interesting because we're learning about some um, local work around foods sovereignty in Grand Portage with the Bison Ranch and all that type of stuff. So it was cool to connect that. And then our middle school and high school students participated in some, a cedar tea time, um, at the end of the day that it was cedar tea made by our culinary arts students. Um, and so that was just a fun way to recognize that and um, come together in community. And then next week, our sixth graders in middle school will be participating in their ATV field safety test. So this is the safety class by um, Ms. Spoon where they get their ATV safety uh, certification, their snowmobile certification and their firearm safety certification over the course of the year. So there'll be, if people see four-wheelers whipping around on the school grounds next week, that's okay. It's intended. Um, and they're looking forward to that. And then I don't know if I'm gonna steal your thunder, Greta, if you heard the news, but our boys cross-country team today narrowly, did you, am I stealing it? Okay.
No, no, go ahead.
We just found out at the end of the day, they narrowly missed taking first place in the section meet today. So they ended up taking second place, which means they'll participate in the state meet on November first. So we're excited about that.
News they win their conference though?
Yeah, they were conference champions. The boys were.
Yep.
Um, and then, yeah, had a great showing at the section meet um, today. Uh, and then on Monday this week, we had a professional development day. We had our paraprofessionals in for red act training last year. Um, our teachers spent a lot of time around red act training and now we're um, having that with the paraprofessionals. Um, teachers did a lot of curriculum work um, on Monday, aligning curriculum through grade levels. So that was some good work. And then in the afternoon, we had our second session of good relations training, um, which is helping support our staff, um, facilitate and incorporate indigenous education for all in our school. And so some of the topics that um, our staff learned about, Eric was able to present to us again, um, was parent advisory committees. Um, and then our, the staff from the ACT um, were able to kind of talk to all of our staff and really give everybody a, a history lesson on the ACT and how that's been incorporated in different roles and stuff like that. So that was really great. And then just a lot of important dates coming up for the community. End of the quarter next week on Friday, um, November third, we're gonna have an early release day. So students are released at one fifteen um, on November third. This is to facilitate conferences in Grand Portage, um, which will be held from three o'clock to five o'clock on the third. And then our conferences in the evening at school here, November sixth and eleventh will be from three thirty to six thirty.
Just a point of information on that comment, Josh. If board members get questions about why the early release, we've never done that before. It's because of construction. We had, we compressed our calendar and we put those conferences, which were usually like a whole day off. We made them two instructional days so that we could compress our calendar. That's the why behind it. And so we'll see how it goes, but um, it might actually be, we'll find out, but it might actually be better for portage parents because it's three to five instead of one to three, depending on their work schedule. So we'll see.
I'm putting that in my calendar right now, so.
You really, really, yeah. We'll put on an email. But yeah, busing is still happening. It's just everything is two hours earlier than.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. Okay, six point two is the superintendent's report.
Oh, I thought we had Greta first. Oh, I'm up. Okay.
You're up.
Are you talking about football at all?
No.
All right. Then the only thing I'll add is um, uh, re- related to the construction project that we're under, good for the public to know. Um, the request for bids for the project is, is open right now. Uh, and people are, contractors are able to bid. So uh, when we had a contractor walkthrough meeting, I think it was just fourteenth, uh, we had twelve contractors onsite. Our consultants are engaging with nineteen contractors right now. And when I say nineteen contractors, I don't mean there's all different pockets of construction. So um, nineteen total contractors right now are being engaged in, in back and forth. And next week, there'll be some site visits from some contractors. Bits will be opened on November fifth, uh, and that uh, will take place in the cafeteria. Uh, it's, it's a big process where it, it's a sealed bid process. So we'll open bids, we'll document what everyone bid. Uh, and at that point, then a week later, the POC will review uh, all of the bid documents and then on the, at the November meeting, uh, which is next month, uh, the board will see and approve bids. Uh, and by then we'll know a whole lot more about um, how our bids are coming in against the plans and uh, how we plan forward. So it's a big, big month for what's already been passed. Uh, and then regarding the referendum that's currently underway, our voters should know that um, ballots need to be at the auditor's office by November fourth, which means if you're mailing your ballot, do so before October thirtieth because it takes a while in snail mail to get there. Um, and ballots can be dropped off in person at the auditor's office as late as election day. And I believe the closing time on that day is eight PM by law, um, for um, election days. With that, I think I'll wrap up and let, uh, we're gonna have fun with some of the other cool announcements going on.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you. Uh, all right, six point three is our student school, school board member report from Ms. Greta Yumdal.
Hello, Greta. Welcome.
Hi.
Long time no see.
I know.
Yeah, good to have you.
See, um.
Is this gonna be like, you know, like six times as long as normal? We haven't seen you since the end of last school year?
I, yeah, no, I have actually quite a few things that I wanted to mention. First, this uh, month has been full of exciting events and accomplishments across our school. From strong finishes to sport seasons and unforgettable homecoming memories, students have been staying busy both inside and outside the classroom. And so this is what our October looked like. Um, the volleyball team just played our first and last playoff game yesterday against number one seed Southridge. Unfortunately, they lost, but the team played their hardest whole season and should be very proud of their effort. On a high note, our varsity swim team, which is a co-op with Duluth Marshall and Tarver's High School, um, is undefeated this whole season. And tonight is our conference championships and then their sec, their sections will take place November sixth and eighth. And our varsity football team is also undefeated, which makes them number one in our conference. So they had to buy their first playoff round. So then the second playoff round is this Saturday at two PM and they'll be playing Northwoods. Um, and then if they win that, they're gonna play again on Halloween. Our boys' cross-country team, as Mr. Belangi mentioned, um, is gonna go to state. They got second today. And I think the girls got like sixth place. Um, so soon our winter sports practices will be starting up. Our basketball, Nordic and Alpine teams are all looking for players. So if you know anyone interested, encourage them to join. Um, a major highlight for high school students this month was homecoming. Lexie Plummer and Nicholas Barbara Crown, homecoming queen and king. We had a pet fest on Monday during school. The homecoming part got to participate in games like finish the song and musical chairs. And then all grade six through twelve also got to participate in like the battle cry competition and tug-of-war. And then we ended the week with a New York-themed homecoming dance on Friday night. Personally, it was one of my favorite homecomings and definitely want to remember.
And who won the tug-of-war?
Um, I think the freshmen and.
The battle cry was like the sixth graders.
Oh, my gosh. And I won musical chairs, so.
There we go.
Not out there. Uh, now if you miss the lanious updates, we have a lot of new National Honors, Honor Society members joining this year, which is super exciting. And the induction for that will be held November third. Um, another exciting thing is the college and the school's English class got to take a field trip to the University of Minnesota Duluth. We got to use the campus library there and then get a tour around the college. And we even got to eat in the dining hall, which is a really fun experience. The middle schoolers are having a Halloween party this Friday to fundraise for the Washington DC trip. And also the senior government class has been doing a congressional simulation where they create bills and pass them in like a congressional meeting. So if you guys happen to notice, a lot of creative policy change ideas floating around, that's why. And as we're up with the fall season, it's been super fun to see what all the students have been involved with and everything they're achieving. And with winter sports and new academic opportunities, it's just around the corner. We're looking forward to keeping that momentum going into the next month. Thank you, guys, all for your time. And if you have any questions or anything, feel free to email.
I, I do have one question. What time is the Honor Society induction?
That's a good question. I actually don't know. I think it's like.
Seven.
Yeah, I think it's seven. Last year it was seven.
And they have conferences in.
It's the night of, yeah, it's the night of the early release and conferences in Grand Portage.
Probably seven.
Yeah. And that will be amazing.
So you know, it's hard to believe, Greta, but you know, this is October. And that means that you have been serving in this, this role for ten months. And you've got two more months. Two more.
To find a replacement.
November, December. So, you know, it's, we're counting them down. But yeah, we will be thinking about your successor after this. So if you have any, any thoughts on that, sort of spreading the word amongst the junior class, because it'll be a junior. So.
Sounds good.
I think it's the first time our football team has been undefeated since two thousand and seven.
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
That's what I heard too. It's been a long time.
Almost twenty years.
Really exciting.
That's super exciting. And to have that happen and boys cross-country team do that well, and the girls do quite well. I thought they got second at conference, if I remember right.
Yeah, I think they did good at that.
Uh, well, fall. It's just been great. So.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Thanks for coming.
Yes. Have a good night, Greta, and Mr. Belangi.
Okay, seven point O is our consent agenda. Um, yeah, if there's anything to be pulled for further discussion, um, otherwise we've seen a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, eight point O are discussion and action items. Eight point one is to accept the expenditure and revenue report for September of twenty twenty-five. It's in the packet here, um, although Ms. Oberg is not.
In the packet?
In the packets or in the room.
Yeah. Yeah, there's nothing really that stands out to me. Um, but yeah, just for clarity's sake, Ms. Oberg has jury duty this week, so she's burning the candle at both ends. It's only in really month two of, of the fiscal reporting here, so um, not, not a lot burned through yet.
Great.
I make a motion to accept consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any revenue report?
Oh, the revenue report, I'm sorry. Keep up.
Expenditure, expenditure revenue report. Okay, we, we knew what you meant.
Spent at your revenue.
All right, thank you. And uh, Quinn seconded that. All right, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, eight point two, uh, we got a discussion item here about mountain biking club. We've got a couple of visitors.
Yeah. So welcome to the Greggs. Come on up to the table here. And then we haven't had a chance to talk. Do you want me to to like project this or do you want to talk through it? A lot of board members all have it in, linked in their packets. Um, so how would?
Please talk through, I think.
Okay. And if you're clear about what page you're on or whatever, they can scroll in their packets uh, to that, that document. But Brian, Melissa, Greg, um, parents of first or second, first?
Second.
Second grader.
Eleventh.
And an eleventh grader. Yeah, yeah. So welcome.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, thanks for giving this time on your agenda. We're here because we want to partner with you to improve the school forest trails and increase the utilization of them. Uh, you all have the documents. I'm not gonna read it to you, but I'll just kind of go through some of the high, highlights of it. Um, who are we? We're Brian and Melissa Gregg. We coach the high school mountain biking here in town. Uh, we serve sixth grade through twelfth grade on that. This is our second year doing it here. Last year we had seven kids, this year we had eighteen kids. And the number one question we get from parents, people around the community, whatever, why are you gonna do this for elementary school? Just like Steve Sparks. And we tell them, uh, uh, I don't know when we're gonna do that. But the real problem is, we don't have any good trails to do that on for beginners or for elementary school kids. Uh, there's plenty of trails of pincushion. There's plenty of trails of Big Peak. They're way too difficult for, for like smaller people or, or total beginners. We had a few total beginners and it, it's difficult. So we've been talking to Mr. Lindholm for a number of months now about, is there some way that we could do something in the school forest? And why the school forest? The school forest is relatively flat, especially compared to everywhere else here. And it's kind of underutilized at this point. So what we're, what we're talking about is, like, we're not, we're not asking for about mountain bike trails. We're asking for some multi-purpose trails. So think like the, the kind of the crushed gravel trail in the rac park, something like that, like a mini gravel road. Oh, like this, why? Mini gravel roads through the park and, or through the, through the forest is what we're talking. So there's a bunch of different users of this. Like, we are not even the tertiary user. So in my view, the school cross-country runners are probably the number one use case. And I've talked to their coach about this April. But uh, right now, they practice on the city streets and sidewalks, which is not really the safest place for them, nor does it resemble what they do in competition. So if we had some, I'm gonna call them mini gravel roads again, running through the forest, they could run back there. And she thought that would be fabulous. Uh, maybe there could even be one of their meets hosted there. Currently, they have two meets every year that both at pincushion. You could do one down at the school and maybe in the early season. And then at the later season, do the other one at pincushion because pincushion's pretty difficult. Whereas back there in the forest, it's a lot flatter. So they could have an easier one and a harder one. So that's a big possible use case. Third grade learned to bike class could go back there instead of riding around the parking lot or riding inside the community center. Probably more fun for the kids. Uh, who else? Outdoor education classes. So they'd have better access to the forest. You'd have less mud. Um, based on the soil type back there, we'd be talking about importing fill. So basically bringing in gravel and putting it out there. So and then it gets, you know, it gets sloped, so water flows off. So you don't end up with the mud pits. You have a lot less maintenance because you don't have to haul the wood chips around. So when the, when the classes go out there, they're not gonna come back in with muddy feet, track up the school. So when the when the classes go out there, they're not gonna come back in with muddy feet, track up the school and make somebody have to clean that up. Who else? Uh, beginner mountain bikers. Oh, yeah, that's why we're here. So we could go back there and we could have a an elementary school learn how to mountain bike program, kind of like ski sparks. What else? Winter snow activities. Also give a trail that's relatively flat and this wide. You could take a snowmobile and a groomer through that. And the the high school Nordic team could go and ski back there. Or the outdoor education classes could go and ski out there. What else? Youth education. Uh, if there was kids interested in forestry or trails or wetlands or that type of thing, they could learn some trail building and by being involved in the trail building process. Um, what else? So we got a big thing in here for research. We both used to work in medical research for over a decade at Mayo Clinic before we moved to town here. So we're we're big into the research. I'm not gonna read you all the bullets, but we partnered with Dr. Jane Greenberg. She's a youth movement ambassador from Lifetime. And she went and found tons of medical research supporting benefits of physical activity, benefits of biking and benefits of trail biking in youth and youth development and learning outcomes and that type of thing. And then I'm just gonna cruise on through this. There's a few pictures in there. Shows a little bit of what we're talking about. So you can see it's really, it's a mini gravel road. Few more pictures, got the wetlands in there. And so what we're asking for, we're not asking for you guys to pay for it. We're not asking for you to plan anything. We're not asking you to do anything for us. What we'd like is permission to develop an actual plan. And the reason that we want to ask first is because it's kind of expensive to put a plan like that together. I don't want to go and spend thousands and thousands of dollars if you guys are all like, no, not happening. So permission to develop an actual plan. We'll find partners to assist with planning, funding, building and maintaining. And like ideally, we'd return at a later date and and discuss with you and get some input as to like, how can we make this work? Is that it?
Yeah, yeah.
We wanted to make sure we were short so that there was time for discussion and
For sure.
hear your questions and hear your thoughts.
Yeah, thank you. Um, questions, thoughts?
My only thought is that I would like to see this done in a more comprehensive way with our other use of what we plan to do with the forest. We've been talking about um, if this next referendum is passed, that there's money for outdoor education. And so it seems like those two processes should go together and not you guys go and do one thing and then, you know, just to make sure that we're using the space the way we want to use it educationally as well. So that would be my my main comment.
Sure. Right, yeah. So yeah, maybe you guys know that, but as a part of the referendum that is up for vote right now is some money to help with out- outdoor learning spaces and that would potentially go towards some further development in school forest. We do have some of that money um, already allocated. It's coming from the legislature. Uh, so I think that that there's um, potential work sort of coming down the pipeline. And I agree with that, that we wouldn't want to do we we would want everything to sync up, for sure. You wouldn't want to build a trail right through the spot that we're gonna put the classroom or whatever, have these things sort of complement each other. So I think there's like a timing piece on that, you know, just in terms of like the logistics. Um, sort of regardless of how the conversation plays out here, you know, we're gonna find out next month, the status, and then there's a a planning phase that's pretty robust that we will, I assume, go through if it matches how this referendum has has gone that. Um,
User groups.
You know, user groups, et cetera. And you know, this could be, you know, how the however they um, we skin the cat on that. Uh, so I don't know that we could commit to like a specific timeline right now in terms of like, yes, go make a plan, you know, because of that. Yeah, we we, there's a couple of balls in there that probably we should just kind of see where the dust settles on that. Um, I'm glad that you guys are um, appreciating that it's like a multi-use space because, you know, that would be a concern of mine is just that uh, we want to make sure that it, this space is multi-use because sometimes bikes and other user groups don't always like get along well, you know, and which is not not like personality wise, but just like the uses conflict sometimes. So just being clear about that is 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 important too, because obviously we need the space for for lots of other stuff.
I think it's, sorry to cut you off for you.
Oh, yeah.
And I mean, I'm like, I'm obviously connected to both sides of this, so you can, I don't want to like be the advocate for it necessarily, because I mean, you know where I would stand on it. But I do think that it's on that multi-use side of it, it's it's good to remember um, that these would be appealing to like a very beginner user group.
Sure.
So you're not, it's not gonna be like the person that tears around at pincushion. That would be moving at twenty miles an hour and would conflict with some user groups. Like this isn't going to be where they're going to want to go. You know, because that because that because that group is well-served already within the county. Um, and yeah, so I think the multi-use thing would be great, I
That does bring up an interesting point though, is like, if it is multiple use and you've got you know, your cross-country team training are, you know, is it then open to other people who would be riding bikes there too, or something like that? That might not be you know, I mean, there could be some real logistic things to think about when different groups could use this or how that would work.
Yeah. And then I would say that, I mean, there is day reference in there, you know, if most likely would be the dirt candy, that would build these trails or, right? And like, I think also, it's good to recognize that those are very professional trail builders and they would design these things. I mean, you can't design conflict or anything completely out of something like this. But uh, it would be safe trails that would have, you know, good visibility. Um, and that kind of thing. So again, I mean, I don't, I think I shouldn't have even brought up people tearing around on it. Because I don't think that'd be happening early, but uh,
Yeah, what, I mean, if you look at the pictures of the trails, if I showed the pictures of these trails here that are in this document to the kids on the mountain bike team, they would have zero interest in riding on that. It wouldn't be appealing to them. But it's something that my daughter, Quinn's daughter could ride on. They're both in second grade and of this tall. It would be fun for them. But they're gonna go like six miles an hour. So just, I'm curious in terms of like places in Cook County that you're considering doing this, you know, this is one option. Um, the developed mountain bike trails you mentioned are appropriate. I was just wondering if you guys have explored like any of the other like myriad, like logging roads or anything like that that exists in Cook County that are more akin to this, you know? Is that like a potential option for this activity?
So I've been talking to um, a couple of different like national organizations that that have programming for you for for elementary mountain biking. And um, we talked through the pincushion venue and that was when they told me no, we can't come to your town because what you have there isn't okay for people that you're talking about serving. And they sent me to first step to the forest service and said, go ask if you can use the ski trails. And the forest service and I went back and forth a little bit and um, there's some, there's some turf wars. And um, and so really, I mean, it was one of those things where I didn't like, I don't want to get in the middle of something here. When there are other opportunities. And then we started talking to Mr. Leno.
Sure, okay.
And you know, as I said, that like what that's basically getting at is that like, like our ski trails, they're not technically our ski trails, but that you can obviously go ride a bike on those, but they are not permitted bike trails.
Yeah.
And they're not recognized as such, so if you were doing anything um, and I think cushion is the same. Um, you know, like the ski trails are not designated by the forest service as official bike trails. Which um, I mean, you know, the name of the game is forest service liability. So it's fine for like me or recreational users, but if you wanted to run a program or something out on those trails, uh, the forest service would have to approve that. And for that to be approved, um, not in like a conditional use way, but in a like permanent way, those you would have to work to get those trails approved. As mountain bike trails. And um, could happen. I mean, it's it's been since two thousand and eighteen that I've been doing it, because ours hasn't happened. So uh, and then, you know, pincushion is a lot of elevation too. It's not just a technical thing. It's it's places in the county that are are flat enough.
Yeah, kids, I mean.
For little kids, yeah, yeah, exactly. Because you know, that's like it's a lot to
Oh.
Like a grassy trail and a, you know, whatever. Twelve percent gray. In, I have a question. Um, you mean aerial pictures of where the trails are? Um, there are, there are some areas like the west end that it's purple on the one picture. Um, is it just me or is that trail like super overgrown and like almost unidentifiable?
Yeah, that's, that purple is not a trail.
Okay, I was like
The the red is trails and then there's a little blue and green.
Green one, yeah. And and those are there, yeah. So with the vision being that basically have like a loop or these are like a couple of different intersections.
Yeah.
Would you keep it simple so that you don't have accidents? Or would you have, what are you thinking of that?
I think our our biggest thought was ideally you could have a loop roughly a mile, something where if you had, if you ran it three times, you'd have a five K.
Sure.
Once again, that works really nicely for the cross-country runners. So if we could get like a one-mile loop, you know, the the forest kind of wraps around. So you give a one-mile loop, but then ideally have some places where you can cut it off.
Got it.
Because if I go out there with a three-year-old on a strider bike,
Yeah.
they don't want to go a mile. They're not going a mile.
Right.
But they, but if you've been these cutoffs, now you can have now whatever length you want.
You can take my three-year-old on a mile.
Uh, the, well, just as you're kind of wrapping your head around the plans, at least conceptually right now, um, the, like where the existing football field is, um, like to the east of that, there's like some trail like um, proposed or there is a trail there.
There is a trail there, yeah.
Perhaps that's what you're thinking as part of the loop. Um, you know, if the referendum passes, you know, that area is gonna get redeveloped to a certain degree, get a track. Um, and because of the track and the way that it needs to fill in and the track and the field uh, facilities, it's gonna be a bigger footprint than currently is there now. And it's also gonna shift to the east a bit. So it'll cut into the those trees, I think, maybe a little bit. I don't know if we know for sure, but that's just something to be aware of, I guess, that that area is full, you know, could potentially change a little bit.
So kind of all this to say, if the referendum passes or whatever passes, um, that it will impact.
Yeah. That's why these are, these are kind of like the maps of what's there.
Yeah.
We haven't put together a map of what we want because
True.
Would you, would you put a trail in on on the north side of the baseball field where there apparently isn't one, that purple area? On the next slide, you've got a yellow line. So would the goal be to make it?
Yeah, so that the purple area, this was done by the trail builder. He went out there in GPS, everything he could find.
Yep.
And that purple area, he labeled that as area for expansion.
Okay, perfect.
But then the other one, that's the the official county wetlands guy map. And he claims that there's maybe trails out there, because that's what yellow is. Okay.
I think there used to be and they're just horribly overgrown.
Okay.
I hung out there, I said, like, this looks like it was a trail at one time.
Some of it gets pretty wet out there too.
Yeah, and and they've mapped that out here. That creek that runs through there is legit. Uh, we all know that.
And at the end, there's a letter from the county wetlands guy talking about how he would deal with the wetlands.
But essentially that that area north of the baseball field right now is not used at all.
Right.
Because there's no trail going through there that's usable.
So what is um, it it sounds like you have some ideas for fundraising for this and and to accomplish the the project. Is that um, you're you guys, you're feeling pretty good about about that?
Oh, yeah.
The ability to to complete this. Um, I guess, I mean, we're maybe not quite there yet, but you know, what if we get into something as it's not planned? Are we gonna be able to complete the project? Are we gonna have enough money to do all that sort of stuff, contingency, thinking about that, you know, just, you know? We obviously don't want to, we would want to end up with a good result and not a sort of torn up for us. We ran out of money to complete the project.
It's hard to fundraise when you're at this level, when it's when there is no plan and there's no permission to build anything. But we've talked to a couple of different nonprofits that were really interested in in paying for it.
Okay.
And then we could also potentially do things like just go to the community and try to do some fundraising there. Or depending on how much we had students and volunteer labor, that could bring the cost down significantly as well. So
Sure.
Okay, study hall, the worst study hall ever.
It's not labor.
I I will say that, you know, when I was in high school, Boston along with the cross-country team, we had summer practices, which I kind of don't know why we're allowed to do, because we've contacted the coach, but and we uh, part of that, like an hour of that was building a trail on those trail grounds of the school grounds that then were used for a need. So it's actually very similar to and that was uh, I mean, that this might just be my personality, but like, that was a really great thing. Like we took kids took so much pride in that, you know? And it was like, this is, I mean, I, I'm never there. I always want to like go back and see it, because I know it is still there. Um, so I I do think that that the student involvement could be a really great opportunity, because team building is a community building thing. Um, and to be honestly, like for me, that is kind of like my like first encounter with like hard physical work and tough is a lot, so.
Do we know would there be, need to be some sort of like um, environmental like impact assessment or something to to do this sort of work? On our land?
I would have to do some homework on the um, the requirements of being a certified school forest with the D N R, because that area is. And I don't know how they interplay the bureaucracy of the D N R and being a certified school forest in that program. Um, and so that's one question I would ask. Um, the other one, as far as an environmental study, I don't know. That's a good question.
Just Quinn made me think of it, you know, talking about the forest service, not national forest land, but you know.
And it's wise to engage the wetland department of upfront, because that's an essential component to this. I know in in your comments, you've commented a little bit about the property on the north side of the Gunpoint Trail. Um, and to me, that property is a more elevation, uh, so that's a that's a negative. Um, but I want to make sure it's part of the conversation here, uh, that uh, yes, that property is plotted as a residential plot and it looks like there's corridors and everything for streets. Um, yes, but the district owns pretty much the whole thing. So that that that's irrelevant. We, you can, when you own the whole thing, you can do whatever you want with it. And at one point, we had been talking about possibly other development for that and and then ruled it out. Um, there is about ha- about half of it is wetland, however, which would require some pretty significant planning to deal with. So um, I got to make sure board members are not you understand that that property is sitting there. We're not using it. We're paying taxes on it. It's got no purpose for the district right now. Um, and that is a variable. So does, I mean, the county or the the city does own the public dedication, right? I mean, they could waive it, but but they the they own the public dedication, don't they? They do, but it right now, it's all ours, right? So what are we gonna do?
If it's not developed, then they're not putting some extended stuff.
Yeah, okay. So I I'm not, I mean, I don't know my real estate. So like, it doesn't matter that that city on public dedication is there. You could school, put something right in the middle of it, like a building, even though it's Hiding, hiding six lots together. Pying plying six lots together, yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Yeah, just leave it right.
So is the the property in north of the Gunflint, is that a school forest of the D N R or no?
No.
Oh.
The one that's, yeah, the one that's certified is the this property we're talking.
That makes things a little easier, and if it's wetland, I mean, we're not talking about building, we're talking about trails, scoot around them.
Bridge over them or whatever.
Yeah, I mean. They're trails, like their low impact is by nature.
So it's it's less flat, I do want to be clear about that, I walked that.
Those little shavers need to exercise, get some energy out.
Well, it's it's, I mean, it was a thought that we had as as this conversation is. You know, sort of swirled a little bit and um. Because it's completely undeveloped and we're not using it, you know, as it's a potential opportunity. And it's not the type of development that it's not like building a. You know, eighty thousand square football room or something that it's hard to like redevelop in the future, you know.
But you could do that, you wouldn't have to tear anything down.
Right. But you know what I mean, like it's not to sacrifice the trail in the future, but you know, it's a type of development that like you could. Change course on at some day in the future if you needed to, just that's been some of the hesitation that the school board has had about developing that property. You know, for other ways is that like, well, once you kind of do that, you're sort of like you, the deed has been done. A trail is maybe a little less permanent.
Oh, it's a good thing if it's the the building project does go forward, oh, there's walking trails.
Well, maybe, yeah, maybe it's done in such a way, so it's not, it's as we continue to think about it, it's not something that we should necessarily count out as a potential option. Um this, you know, just because I think our interest here is um. You know, I'm thinking about like, what's the downside, what are the risks, you know, what's the impact to like the existing use and the intention of the space, right? Because that's what we don't, like improvement, sounds great, we just don't want to like create an issue, right? Or like preempt some other use that we already have, right? That that's kind of the main, the issue that I tried to.
Yeah, that's what I'm about to, I just want to make sure we don't go down a path and then go, oh, why did we do that?
Yeah.
Because we really want to use it for this.
Right.
Or want to use this section of it for this.
Right.
I gotta worry about the D N R permitting process with the school forest, school forest, yeah.
I have no idea, yeah.
Well, that's a good little bit of homework for Chris to do in the meantime here, you know, maybe.
Are we talking natural resources or do not resource? We go forward, I just, sorry.
It's a program I'm not familiar with, um. The the school, the the certified school forest used to be the forty acres east of uh or between. Along Highway fourteen and then at some point it transitioned to this forest here. April Wallstrom used to oversee it and now we've handed that off to Mike Tyson a little bit, but um. That's something I can easily reach out to a conservation officer and figure out. What are the hoops there if there are any? And that's something that we will encounter regardless of any of this, just. If we do anything, I mean. Yeah, we have to resubmit our plan and all that, like.
Well, yeah, won't they commit track uh running to these same issues?
Uh the track probably not.
Because it doesn't go to school.
Right.
Some of the outdoor education space stuff.
True, the bridge repair work would probably for sure, um. You know, include that and so that you know, um. We have this two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, um and how we um. Spend those dollars depends a lot on whether the referendum passes or not, if the referendum passes. There's money in that to pay for some of the outdoor learning spaces closer to the building, so more of it could go towards. The trails and the bridges and that kind of stuff, so um we're kind of just waiting on that to figure out how much money we have to work with. But your point's well taken, I think we'll have to engage the D N R with the bridges for sure, and I think if it passes and we have to. Put a track in there, we'll have to move that east bridge further east and cut in a new trail. Just because the track will be in the way.
Well, yeah, and so this, you know, the timing of all this could end up being, you know, nice and there could be some synergy between. Um some of the ideas that you guys have and potential funding sources and funding that we're bringing to the table and, you know, could maybe make it. Even better.
For sure, the goal of tonight is obviously not to make any decisions, uh that was really to get all the. Questions and facts and what abouts on the table, so. And you've mentioned the sawtooth bluff development, I I appreciate that because that conversation's been spinning for years. It it was intriguing when I learned that in that conversation was access point by the dog park and that flatter area there. Problem is no one knows when that's going to move forward, there isn't current funding for it that I know of.
No, there's still a lot of conversation at the county.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
Well, cool, so as far as next steps, I mean, you know. I guess we're not saying go make your plan right now just because of some of these other external factors, but you know, let's stay tuned on what happens with that. And then maybe we can circle back and see what like an appropriate timeline might be, you know, to invest in that.
What about the for the north side of the Gunflint, could we go and pursue that at all, would that be an option?
Um. Well.
Didn't we already have, didn't the H R A do a study on that already, so we know what the wetlands are?
Yeah, I have the wetland delineation study that's good for another probably two years, I think you gotta do it. Is it five years that are good?
It's five.
Yeah, so we did it like two years ago, so might be for three and I can give that to you.
Yeah, we have that.
We got that. So it, that maps it out, I don't think there's anyone that would hold you back from walking it, you know, looking at it, checking it out and seeing.
Well, be you and you're not, so.
Whether you, whether you want to spend money is the next question, and um I think. I would probably wait to hear from you about whether you think that would be.
There's anything there.
Yeah, if it's a, if it's. Worth pursuing. There's an old ski trail in there, not even an old ski trail, you know.
Say it again?
Yeah, there's a snowmobile like.
Snowmobile.
No, the skiers used to cut through there. Someone else told me that, that there used to be a ski trail. I mean, they they did that as of like four or five years ago, but then there's just not enough snow, but if it's also a ski trail, it's all through marsh. It's not really relevant, because I sound like I knew this.
Stephanie was always, when she was on the board, was always concerned that if they did a housing thing, that they would lose that snowmobile crossover place.
Right.
Yeah, we're not stepping on a snowmobile.
That's important to the community, well, steer.
I just, I just bring it up because of that, because that's right in there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, now that land is sitting there and we've got the data. Uh so then it's a matter of can something work? Yeah, I think something to think about with that is that is. Uh if if you see like a modern mountain bike trail, which is built in a very sustainable way, which is good.
Right.
But that means that like any interaction with wet, wet areas. Will make everything so much more expensive, because it's not like you just bike them up for a little bit anymore, you know.
No, you call it some bridges.
Yeah, so so just in terms of this general, like the general idea of this project. I am. I mean, for me, it's like, why not though, you know, but um basically like. It's it's a bunch of wetlands, it's it's not like a small thing, you know, um in terms of especially. Whatever the funding sources would be, it's it's just. Will make something much, much, much more expensive uh to deal with that.
For sure.
For sure. Um, yeah, well, thank you, maybe, you know, touch base with after the referendum passes. Hopefully, you know, but. Be in touch with Chris and then, you know, we'll go from there with what they've got advice on what the next best step would might be. I'm like, so it sounds good.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you guys for coming in, appreciate it. Um, okay, let's see here. So eight point three um is to approve uh Minnesota Payle vendor and.
Yeah, so um in in your packet, uh if you open that, you see you have a quote document. Uh and then the second link is. I believe to the law and policy, I actually page on page some policy. Um Trace and I have spent quite a bit of time trying to vet whether or not we will just take. State plan and move forward or whether we will recommend the board to move to a private vendor to administer. Minnesota Payle, which starts on January first and. I learned several months ago that our county, the county is going to be using a a private vendor and most counties or at least half counties and state are. Doing the same and um we've done a lot of investigative work. I learned at a M A S A conference that far more school districts are pursuing this. Than I thought, because not that many are in the Arrowhead. Um there's only a couple of districts in the Arrowhead that are pursuing this, but a lot statewide are. And so as we were vetting the pros and the cons, uh we went out and got a quote from N I S, which is our current consultant to health insurance. They work with Madison Life and uh they quoted back. A cheaper rate to both the employee and the employer for that benefit. The the state's cost is eight point eight eight percent, which would be divided point four four to the employee and point four four to the. Us um employer, uh Madison Life is quoting us point seven eight, so it becomes a point three nine and a point three nine split. It's not a ton of money, if you're an employee, you're talking like four hundred bucks a year. The real kicker is that uh we feel the customer service of N I S has been nothing short of. Phenomenal, the whole time we've worked with them on health insurance and uh life insurance. So we feel uh that the right thing to do to recommend that we go with um. A vendor that we know their work, we know they have excellent customer service, there's one lady named Paige who we call anytime we have a question and we get our answers. We know that, we we don't know anything about how responsive the state is going to be um as they roll this out. We know that Madison Life administers this in many, many other states already and have been doing it for years, um so for them, it's plug and play, just. Plug in the Minnesota rules and play their tape that they've been doing for a long time. Um so we feel pretty confident uh that it's the right thing to do going into this in year one. Knowing that if it doesn't go well, we can bail out anytime we want, the only string attached to that is is once we move to the public. State system, we have to stick with the state for three years before we could ever go back to a private vendor, that's, they give this hook uh on that. So. I we feel confident that this is probably the right thing to do, knowing the quality of service we get from N I S.
Given that this is a brand new program for the state.
Brand new.
I. These things take time, look at, look at how mature was when they rolled that sucker out.
Right.
That, I mean, they eventually got it, but it wasn't good for. For a long time, so I don't know, seems like the low low risk to do this.
And they're providing all the same benefits, right? Or the benefits are outlined in the law.
It's in the law.
And so they're providing.
Right.
So it's there, it's basically everything is the same except for it's a little bit cheaper.
Correct.
Yeah, big emotion for free enterprise.
I mean, that's kind of why the recommendation came forward, we were like, well, what's the downside?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I keep wondering.
So. That's why it's our recommendation.
We get brownie points at the legislature if we do this thing.
I mean, they could change their pricing, I suppose, is the lock happen at point eight eight or?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Uh and they're. They scale their costs um based upon a number of employees that they're insuring, how big their. You know, the lives in the policy, so like the N L C uh is going to go with N I S and they're getting a cheaper rate than we are.
Okay.
Um and then Cloquet said their quote was was more than the state. So uh it, they're not going to go with the private vendor, so it comes down to. How big the economics of insuring someone.
Got you, okay. That makes sense.
That was kind of news to me when I asked around, some of it was cheaper and some of it was more.
Yeah, modern life, I tell you. Christ.
Insurance.
Insurance in general.
If you ever want to really make yourself go crazy, edit all the places you pay for insurance in your life.
Yeah.
You don't want to know.
True story, so you'd like to get an approval on this to move forward?
Yeah, we uh we talked about that, it doesn't necessarily require it, but we talked, we thought about it, like you approved the health insurance with the co-op. So this is board approval to approve going with this vendor, N I S uh for Payle.
I already, I already made one, but sure.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, Eric?
Yeah, you were, you your motion was for free.
That's right.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries? All right, eight point four is to accept donations for October. Twenty twenty five, we've got our resolution in the packet here with the number of donations. I have one question, actually. On the donations, if I can, there's a donation for cheerleading. Do we have like a cheerleading? Because we don't have an official cheerleading squad yet, so do we? How do we handle their, like, do we have an activity account for them or like, how do we handle a donation?
They have an activity account.
They do?
Yes, so it's just student owned money for their activities and.
Gotcha.
So when they fundraise. They uh put it in.
Earmark to them.
It's in there, but it's theirs and all student activities, the on the expense side, they have to be signed by both. The advisor and at least one or two students, because it's student owned money.
So they, so getting an activities account doesn't necessarily like. They're like any student group, any group of students could create an activities account or like.
Yeah, with with my approval, um you know, and part of why we created one for the cheerleading program was because it was happening. And there and there was no eyes on the dollars and that scares me when those things are going on. So I said, well, no, not unless you're going to run it through a student activity account that we audit every year and we we sign off on and I have. Teresa's eyes on, and so that happened, I think, two years ago when we started up.
Yeah, that makes sense.
They were buying uniforms and I didn't, I didn't want a coach just going out there buying uniforms out of their own checkbook.
Okay. Okay, great, great. Um, okay, we just need a motion to accept these.
A motion to accept the donations.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye, those opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you to those donors.
Yes, thank you to the donors for sure, there's a lot of them on here. Lots of, every month seems lots of generosity. Okay, nine point O are personnel item. And nine point one is our slate for this month. For new hires, resign and resignations.
Very professional position. We're always hiring.
Great.
Now I'll make a motion to accept.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Motion carries? I'll make my traditional motion to adjourn, okay.
Where you earn six oh eight.